Welcome, everyone. Today is Tuesday, February 28th, 2023, and this is a regular meeting of the City at Asbury Park Zoning Board of Adjustments. Chairman Avaloni, will you please call the meeting to order?
I will. Thank you. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are filed with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before the Board. Fire exits are located on the east and west sides of the council chambers, as well as the back of the building. I ask everyone with a cellphone to please mute it for the duration of this meeting, and this meeting is being recorded by AP TV.
I will now take roll call. Daniel Harris.
Yeah.
Jill Potter.
Here.
Tim Slick.
Here.
Wendy Glassman is absent today. John Scully.
Here.
Jose Alcaraz. Russell Lewis.
Here.
And Chairman Christopher Avaloni.
Here. All right, just a couple of housekeeping issues. First, I'll make a motion to carry 1201 First Avenue, Tucker Williams' application to April 25th, 2023.
Second.
Twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-fifth?
It's written here, it's twenty-sixth. I don't know.
That's incorrect.
Okay.
It's the twenty-fifth.
Thank you.
Got it. We will correct that.
And that will be without further notes.
Without further notes.
We have a motion, second?
Second. Whoever.
Make your choice.
Got it. Daniel Harris.
Yes.
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 Jill Potter.
Yes.
Tim Slick.
Yeah.
Jose Alcaraz.
Yes.
Russell Lewis.
Yes.
John Scully.
Yes.
Christopher Avaloni.
Yes. And I'll make a motion to carry 1123 Summerfield Sigmunden application to April 11th, 2023, without further notice.
Yeah, I've looked at the notices. They're in proper form. We have jurisdiction, so we can carry.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Servico.
Okay.
Second.
What was the date on that one?
April 11th, 2023.
Thank you.
Daniel Harris.
Yes.
Jill Potter.
Yes.
Tim Slick.
Yes.
Jose Alcaraz.
Yes.
Russell Lewis.
Yes.
John Scully.
Yes.
And Christopher Avaloni.
Yes. All right, so back to 1109 Grand Avenue. Mr. McEwen, it's your show.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, since the applicant's case has come back with potential water location, we change the requested improvements. They require additional variances, and Mr. McEwen has noticed them. I would give you the notice in the proper form, so we have jurisdiction to continue proceeding.
Thank you, Mr. Servico. Mr. McEwen, can you give us a quick synopsis of the application?
Yes.
Since the last time you were here was in December.
That's exactly what I was going to do, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Robert M. McEwen, on behalf of the applicant. So when we were last here, we presented a portion of the application to install a driveway to a parking area on the Grand Avenue portion side of the property. And the reason for that was that the applicant's habit vehicle may want to install a charging station in the lot, so that would be installed. And subsequent to that, well, at the end of that meeting, we didn't get into Ms. Coffin's testimony, the Board thought we should redesign and resubmit an application showing the driveway and Fourth Avenue, which we've done. And we've also modified, amended the Grand Avenue application to make some changes to it to bring it more into compliance. So we've pretty much gotten rid of most of the design exceptions that the applicant was requesting on the Grand Avenue application. The only things left are design exceptions for the location of the parking stall and the side setback for the parking area. The applicant's going to comply with everything else for Grand Avenue. And then what we'll do is we'll finish that, we'll testify, they'll have Mr. Westlowski testify to the amendments to Grand, and then he'll present the Fourth Avenue, and then we'll compare the two for you.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Westlowski, can you briefly? I'm sorry.
I didn't state your name again for the record. My name is Michael Westlowski. First name, L I C D, A D L, last name, W E, S E, S K.
Do you have a personal license for personal identity, correct?
That is correct.
Is she still licensed? We.
Okay, we've already qualified you to master, so we can continue on.
Thank you.
Please, please do.
Thank you. Mr. Westlowski, would you, I guess, describe for the Board briefly the amendments, the modifications that we've made to the application for the Grand Avenue parking stall?
If I may, excuse me, pardon for the interruption. What are we up to with exhibits?
This is where I'm bringing in for.
You know, for.
Eight-five. It would be eight-five.
Okay, so then I'll make this eight-five. Thank you. Correct.
There you go. Let me get everything set up here. What we're seeing on the screen is the Grand Avenue plan on the left and the Fourth Avenue plan on the right. Just try to get them so they're at the same scale as other features, proportional.
So before we proceed, Mr. Westlowski, I understand from Mr. Servico that the Grand Avenue application now has less variances than the Fourth Avenue version of it. Is that correct?
Well, there were never variances, Mr. Chairman.
There were never variances?
Requesting really, variances and/or design exceptions?
Design exceptions.
Design exceptions, okay.
Yeah.
Correct, that a fair portion of those, if not all of them, not all of them, but certainly several of the Grand Avenue, that is now a more conforming application directly.
If I may?
Yes.
I'm sorry for continually interrupting everyone, but why don't I swear in both Jason and.
Yeah, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
All truth and nothing but the truth.
I did.
Will you state your names for the reference?
Donna Miller, board planner.
Jason Fletcher, board engineer.
Sorry for the interruption.
Okay, just refreshing everyone's memory, the Grand Avenue plan on the left, it includes approximately 800 square foot driveway at the southeast corner of the property. Now, that parking area extends to approximately 50 millimeter fence. That fence was previously loaded at six feet height and of a solid style. It's been revised so that it's now four feet in height of open style, thus ordinance compliant and negating the need for those design exceptions. That fence area will accommodate one parking space and one EV charging station. Moving over to the Fourth Avenue plan, that driveway is approximately 540 square feet located at the opposite or northwest corner of the property. There is no fence or gets proposed with this driveway, and it'll accommodate the same one parking space and EV charger. Next, I'd like to actually move to okay review, sir. The CCHW letter updated February 22nd. I think through the majority of those comments as they relate to both applications or two, both plans.
Mr. Chairman, would you prefer that we go through one separately first or do both of them together?
Comparing and contrasting is fine if everyone agrees it.
Okay.
If you get a comment 3.1 on page three of that letter regarding EV charger, as you may recall, a prior version of the plan required the variance for the location of that charger. That belief is no longer required as in both plans. First, on the Grand Avenue plan, the charger is located approximately here. On the Fourth Avenue plan, the charger is located here. Both plans have that charger located beyond the front yard setback, again, thus negating the need for that variance in either scenario. Comment 3.2, we are still requesting a design exception for the provision of one off-street parking space, whereas two are required per the ordinance. Comment 3.3, correspondingly, we are requesting a minimum exception from RSIS in the provision of that same one off-street parking space, whereas per RSIS, three would be required for a five-bedroom single-family home. And again, bear in mind that no off-street parking exists today. Our no new residence is proposed, so the provision of this one space is an improvement over the existing provision. And these elements are relieved apply to both plans. Comment 3.4 describes that apartment for the location of your off-street parking as read in ordinance, Chapter 30, Section 5911. That ordinance section speaks to several requirements. First, that the location of that parking space is to be to the rear of the front yard area. Design exception is requested for both plans. Further, on corner lots, a parking setback of 10 feet is required for other than the front street driveway. On the Grand Avenue plan on the left, we are providing approximately a 10-foot setback from the side yard. And again, this location of the driveway has not changed from prior, and is really a logical extension of the existing patio area. On the Fourth Avenue plan, the setback from the adjacent property line is approximately eight feet. And finally, that ordinance section discusses that the area between the street line and the setback line is to be landscaped with lawn or appropriate plantings. We would intend to maintain both sides of either driveway with lawn as the area exists today.
The applicant will comply with that requirement, correct?
That's correct. Comment 3.5 regarding the provision of at least 10% of the parking area as landscaping. On the Grand Avenue plan, we had originally provided a landscape area here of 42 square feet. We had come to that number, starting or designating parking space as an 18 by 18-foot area totaling 324 square feet, whereby the requirement would have been 33 square feet of landscaping. We now understand that that requirement is meant to calculate the entire area driveway on the property, not just the parking area, thus resulting in a 500 square foot number, a 50 square foot requirement. So we will certainly provide additional eight or so square feet to that element of supply and remove the need for that design exception. And then on the Fourth Avenue, a little more straightforward, the driveway area is 240 square feet, requiring a minimum 24-foot landscaped area, and we provided 40 square feet area along the western property line. Moving on to comment 3.6 regarding fencing, as you heard me previously mention, the Grand Avenue plan now provides fence in a compliant nature, these are the prior design exceptions. And on Fourth Avenue, there is no fence proposed. And finally, street trees, we would have required whatever they needed in terms of either plan, should either get obstructed.
And the Fourth Avenue plan requires that a tree be taken down, correct?
There is a high likelihood that acceleration of the driveway would effectively stop those trees.
Okay.
Finally, I'd like to give you a bit of a more apples-to-apples comparison of both plans as you see them here. Given the frame of reference, both streets, Grand Avenue and Fourth Avenue, are 100-foot driveway, and the curb lines for both streets are approximately 25 feet from the respective driveways. Now, the Grand Avenue driveway is setback approximately 94 feet from the intersection, using the curb line as that point measured, whereas the Fourth Avenue plan, that driveway is setback approximately 74 feet. So the Grand Avenue plan provides an additional 20 feet of separation to that intersection, which is a bad equivalent to the size of the parking space or the vehicle, thus providing for a slightly safer driveway location relative to the intersection. Next, the location of the parking space on Grand Avenue is approximately 12 feet back from the right of way, whereas the Fourth Avenue location has that parking space up to the right of way. Thus, the Grand Avenue plan provides for a more ordinance compliant location, with its location being closer to the rear and front yard. With the Grand Avenue plan, there really weren't any obstacles or design constraints for us to provide a logical driveway location. There were no, nothing in the way of simply extending the patio area as you see here, whereas on the Fourth Avenue plan, there was several things that we had to contend with that kind of forced the location the way you see it. First, there's an existing well had that produced a threat to a grave to have to be avoided. And then, as we discussed, that driveway location there may result in a force between these trees, possibly resulting in, as I mentioned, damage or removal of one or more of those trees.
For the Grand Avenue application, what is the height of the fence?
Four feet.
Four feet.
Correct.
All the way around?
Yes.
With a gate?
Yes.
And it's open fence, and it complies with the ordinance?
As I kind of just touched on, but I'll repeat this to make sure I cover all bases. The Grand Avenue plan is really a logical location where the homeowner pulls into the driveway, park, get out, and immediately enter the adjacent doors and side entry, or the not-so-far door off of the main porch into the house. Whereas the Fourth Avenue entry forces the homeowner to park on the other side of the property, walk all the way around to the side where the Grand Avenue driveway is already proposed, and then enter one of those two same doors.
Is there a rear door at the back of the property?
There is a door approximately here, next to where the Grand Avenue would be, and there's a door from the main porch area in front, where you see the steps here.
There is no back door behind it?
Off where the patio ends to the west and north?
Yeah, there's a deck on the back of the house on the west side of the rear.
There must be a door there.
Doors back there. I mean, you still have to walk three-quarters around the house.
And the difficulty here is there is an existing outdoor shower that prevents access to getting behind the house from this side of the property.
Everything was set up with existing so that the Grand Avenue entrance there on the side, off to the side, and there's a little fence in there you go in that, and you can go there into the back of the house. But there's no backyard, and it's less accessible, really, not accessible from Fourth Avenue because of that shower that you have there.
How many cars does the homeowner have?
We're providing a driveway that holds one parking space.
How many cars does the homeowner have?
Two vehicles.
So the intention is to leave the driveway empty, but for the EV car? And the other car would be parked on the street if Grand Avenue was approved?
That's the intent, yeah.
And also assuming they don't drive yet. I'm very likely that it would be coming and going.
We could never guarantee that, Joe.
That's why I'm asking. That's why I'm asking.
I recall the last time you were here, the Grand Avenue, there were some concerns with the runoff, that the water was going to run down the driveway, run into the right of way. Can you address that?
Yes, we had agreed to comply with all requirements of Inside Engineering's letter that would address the requirements for smaller management based on the minor major of this application. There would be no adjacent runoff to the adjacent property. That would be in excess of what is occurring today.
So, Mr. Westlowski, would you say that the Grand Avenue application, is that closer to conforming with the intent and purpose of the ordinance section that's pertinent to this application versus the Fourth Avenue?
Where, which one is?
59.11.
Is it, is it a planning question that you're asking him or an engineering question?
Well, the location.
I'll answer where he's going without getting into the planning elements.
The location, yes.
Yeah, the planning elements, unless you're a licensed planner, I want to have a listen to it.
So then, in conclusion, Zarpen at the Grand Avenue plan provides a logical, superior design for the homeowner, provides a great degree of convenience for the homeowner, provides the more ordinance compliant design, such that the parking space is located closer to the rear yard, which our planner will testify to. And finally, the Grand Avenue plan provides a safer design, given its relative increased separation to the nearby air section. That concludes my direction.
I have a question regarding the EV charging station. Is that, you have a picture here proposed, but you say it's not the scale. What, is there a height to that pedestal, or, you know, can you give us an idea? Is that going to be visible above the fence?
I generally say chest level.
Chest level.
I do think so.
So it's higher than the fence?
Who's chest? It could be Jason's chest. So what does that mean, chest level? Are you saying two feet, three feet, four feet?
I would estimate in the neighborhood, four feet. I would estimate.
So we don't know what that is? We have no clue?
I wouldn't say no clue. It's not 30 feet tall. It's in the neighborhood of four.
But you don't have an answer for me?
I don't have that data available at the moment now.
Okay.
And I believe that the last time you were here, we did ask you to come back with the dimensions of that.
We did, the picture and all, and what you were going to put in.
Then I apologize. I'm happy to try to look up something for you.
That's not relevant now.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is it, is the charger that specific one, or is the applicant, was that just a sort of stock typical image that you?
I think this is a typical image, as with any type of detail that we always request, and it will approve equal, given availability, current specs as possible.
I mean, because I've seen others that, you know, aren't full-mounted, or, you know, they're basically electrical box on the side of the house. Could we do something like that? It's only two feet off the ground, you know?
I think it's important that the charger is probably more convenient to the homeowner, that it's maybe easier to grab it on its location. That's, I think, not ergonomic for everybody to use. But we're certainly willing to work with you when the homeowner actually has the details they're looking to purchase, to provide that to you for your okay. So that you're aware of what we're looking to install before it is ordered.
We actually, we actually did ask for that. You haven't provided it. Is ours certain?
I think even if we haven't provided that, this is probably still a good route to go, because everything is subject to change. And what we could have given you might be different in a couple months, but this might be worth it.
Are you telling me that you would provide us something that you may or may not use?
No, I'm saying, before the homeowner would order their equipment, we can provide you with a cut sheet for your okay, and if that okay is obtained, they will work.
I think it would be better if we got an eyeball of what it potentially could look like, since we asked for it two months ago. And, you know, are we going to end up with something that's out at Jersey Shore Outlets? Or are we going to end up with something that's, you know, more moderate, fits under the fence line? You know, we don't like shooting in the dark here.
So the applicant is just looking, because they have a Tesla vehicle, and they would, the presumption is that they'd be using a Tesla charging station.
You would have to.
They're talking about five feet, five inches tall.
It wouldn't be any larger than that.
Yeah, it wouldn't be higher than five feet five.
So it could be above the fence line if we approved the Grand Avenue application?
And it would be against the house, though. See, I don't know that you.
Would you descend high on Fourth?
Yes, it's the same, same charging station, except it'd be out of the area on Fourth.
But it wouldn't be as visible from Grand Avenue.
Correct. I would actually disagree with you. There's no fence proposed along Fourth Avenue.
No, but from Grand, you wouldn't be able to see it. Based on your drawing, where you're putting the charger, you're putting it next to three AC units, and it would be blocked by the house if you were standing on Grand Avenue. So it would have even more coverage.
You're saying from Grand Avenue.
From Grand Avenue, view of Grand Avenue.
What we could do is agree to provide as part of that landscaping bed, as much possible, that it may be on a slightly higher install, a slightly higher initial install for growth, to cover that charger from all views, as we infer, all use has that would be obstructed in driver's view of back avenue right way.
Planting for buried? Planting for buried?
Yeah, I think that would largely be the area we've already designated, but just to ensure that the trees were provided here and screened that charge.
You're referring to the Grand Avenue application now? Please.
Is it possible that Tesla, knowing Tesla and Elon Musk, is it possible that there's a shorter unit for residents in existence from Tesla?
I think 5.5 is the highest one they have. So we just said.
What about the lowest? May I speak, or?
No.
Jonathan, Jonathan, I'm sorry. Why don't you talk to Bob, and then he can relay what you're saying?
You want him to test right now?
If you want, you want to put him on the roof? Ask those questions? Is there a help for him?
It might be.
Okay, let's get you on those. Okay. Please, sir, please, as you're right.
Shouldn't we complete Mr. Westlowski first?
Well, I think just with this one question.
Okay, all right, all right.
You may want something that's lower.
Yeah, I didn't plan to have Mr. Moss with anything else.
Less observant from the ground.
Right. Okay.
That's what you're looking for. Sir, I saw a swear testimony about doing this matter in the chief of.
I did.
Can you state your name for the record?
Andrew Moss, A-N-D-R-E-W, M-O-S-S.
Put your hand down there. Assume we have a problem.
I want.
Okay, Bob.
Yes, Mr. Moss, can you talk to the, explain to the board what you were talking about regarding the charging stations, the heights?
So, so I misspoke. You're correct. Superchargers are very large and they're the ones at the malls that you see. But just doing a quick Google, you can buy these Tesla superchargers that are installed right on the house. They're very small. You're going to ask me the dimensions, but it looks very innocuous and to me not more than two feet in length. And again, flush, maybe not more than eight inches out with a wire, an electrical wire leading to the car charger.
So they would be very innocuous. You wouldn't see it from the Grand Avenue if it was approved from that particular.
I believe so, yeah.
You're saying it would not fit to the house?
Yes. It was, I did not believe it would be freestanding.
And it's approximately two, two and a half feet high?
It would seem to be smaller.
Yeah, it can mount at any height according to the owner of the house. So it would be below the fence line. Not seen for grand?
Yes, yes.
Spare carriage position?
Yes.
Would you have a preference? Well, I mean, I'm looking on my phone and Tesla does have a wall charger. Which is rather small and you would never see it from the streets. So you would not have a problem with the wall charger?
I don't think we'd have any problem.
Yeah, it's cheaper too. But I mean, I'm looking at it right now and that would be a better choice. That's how I feel.
You have any further questions for Mr. Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Moss. I, I do not. Does anybody on the board have, have any questions for Mr. Moss?
No, thank you. I said, no, thank you.
Anyone in the public? No, because I want to excuse it. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Do I immediately sworn?
No, you're, you're still sworn in.
All right, Mr. Wazlowski, can you continue on?
I would simply add, for the record, for the board's application, the charger we show here is, the charger of which we're speaking, is the Tesla charger. What you see here is an option for it to be pole mounted. It can be wall mounted. So that is, I believe, the charger that Mr. Moss was speaking to.
The white section of that is the chargings. And that could be mounted to the house.
Correct, does not have to be pole mounted.
I have a Tesla charger at my house and it's between two and three feet. And you can adjust them based on where you want to put them. Charger's not the issue for me on this application. Why, you can hide those things very easily. Any further questions for Mr. Wazlowski? Board professionals, no? Anybody in the public for Mr. Wazlowski?
Actually, I do have.
Oh, go ahead, Jason.
You mentioned before that you'll comply with the requirements for minor development, assuming that's still the threshold depending which way we go.
Right.
Right? So one of those requirements is to manage a certain volume of water based on increasing impermeability. So I foresee something coming on the plan underground, dry well or. So I'm, I'm thinking it's something, whatever you decide it's going to be, there's going to be something to manage somewhere around here. And soils will have to be substantiated. Just want to make sure we're on the same page. So the section of the ordinance that that letter is referring to is minor development. It outlines the various things you have to do, one of which is the volume of water you need to add. It's going to be small, but it's going to be something.
Unless that elaborates more in the ordinance section, my understanding of the comment is specific to, you see, in the word of right, you.
Jason, probably.
That's one of the requirements. Another one is, I still have it here. For each square foot of new impermeable surface, two gallons of stormwater shall be managed using one new order of infrastructure practices set forth in Table 54. Another one is what you mentioned, proving that there's no additional runoff to neighbors, which is the pre and most analysis.
Yes, and of course, we would agree. Formulate a design and use that a lot.
That's a pretty black and white thing. If you guys felt it was appropriate to approve the application, we could do that in a residential planning review. It's technical. If they meet the requirement, they meet it. And if they don't, we come back. And if there's anything visible, then we would also come back. I don't think there's going to be anything visible.
You absolutely don't agree to that, make it a condition.
Thank you. We appreciate that. That's fine.
Okay.
Done with the witness, Mr. Chairman?
I believe so. If anyone else has questions for Mr. Wazlowski? Anybody in the public for Mr. Wazlowski? Nope? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, my next witness is Allison Coffin, who is a licensed planner.
Allison has been here many times.
Okay, Allison, raise your hand. Tell a story, testimony about giving this man the truth.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell it.
Allison Coffin, A-L-T-N, I-L-S-O-N.
Are you still a licensed planner in the state of Michigan?
Yep. Yes.
Since you've appeared before, so you're a licensed planner.
No, we accept your credentials as always.
Thank you. Ms. Coffin, I guess, why don't we do the same thing we do with Mr. Wazlowski and compare the Grand Avenue application to Fourth Avenue, go through each requested relief required.
Well, I think the requesting relief is substantially similar. Doesn't change the number of parking spaces being proposed. Both locations are located within the front yard, although Grand Avenue is further from the frontage. Both are located within the 10 feet required setback from the sidewalk line. Fourth Avenue might require the removal of a street tree, which might require a replacement. But overall, it's my opinion that Grand Avenue is a superior design because it is along the longer frontage, so it's farther from the intersection. It gives us the opportunity to have that car further from the roadway frontage and have a fence to soften it visually. And it is a more logical place to have it. We want to have a wall mounted charger on the side of the building rather than facing the street. So that would be my preference as a solution for this. But as a, either plan requires design exceptions, the design exception relief that's being requested could be granted. The MLU standard for this type of relief is outlined, as the board has the power to grant these exceptions from requirements or the site plan approval as may be reasonable and within the general purpose and intent and provisions of site plan review and approval of an ordinance adopted pursuant to this article. If literal enforcement of one or more provisions of the ordinance is impracticable or will extract undue hardship because of peculiar conditions pertaining to the landing question. So basically, design exception is, is related to hardship. The subject site here is developed fully with a single family home. Existing structure's size and location on this property make it impossible to provide two parking spaces as required and to locate the proposed parking at a conforming location. There is no area outside of the front yard where we can put a parking space. The ordinance of the RSIS would require two to three spaces for this home. None currently exist, so providing one is an improvement. The applicant is improving this and the maximum that can be provided on this available space. Unless the board chooses to say both of those should be there, then we have two parking spaces. I don't think that is an ideal solution, but it would provide two spaces. As there's no conforming location on the site that can accommodate an off-street parking space, the only possible locations require the space to intrude into the front yard and require a 10-foot side yard setback. The proposed variance is an exception to advance, we just do exceptions now, advance the purposes of the municipal land use law with regard to purpose A, moving the public health, safety, moral, and general welfare. Purpose I, promoting a desirable visual environment with creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. And purpose N, promoting the utilization of renewable energy resources. So the benefit to this application is significant. The applicant is providing off-street parking where none had existed, which improves the existing impact of the site beyond street parking in the area. Furthermore, this space is intended to accommodate an electric vehicle charging station, which is a significant public benefit. In 2021, Planning Law 2021 C171 amended the MLUL to address the need for electric vehicle charging stations throughout the state. In addition to requiring ECV chargers in non-residential and multifamily residential parking fields, these changes make ECV charging stations a permitted accessory use in all zones of the state and allow developers to count ECV parking spaces as two spaces for the purposes of complying with the minimum parking requirement, with this accounting for no more than 10% of the minimum requirement. So we can't actually double our parking here, which would make one of those design exceptions go away. But given that the state amended the MLUL to address the specific need and the benefit of this particular type of parking, the benefit provided here is far greater than just providing an off-street parking space. The design exceptions that we're requesting would not impair the intended purpose of your master plan. There's zoning ordinance. The purpose of the parking and loading ordinance is to ensure provision of adequate off-street parking and loading areas for all types of development. Unless provisions are made for off-street parking, such vehicles that are brought into the area by various land uses will be parked on public streets, including in many instances streets that are residential in character. Reliance on off-street parking is detrimental to the public interest as it causes congestion, hinders emergency access, and tends to have a deprecating effect on an area or neighborhood. So this site is brought more into conformity with your parking ordinance by providing an off-street parking space and advances this ordinance' purpose by providing that off-street rather than on-street parking to serve the site. Your master plan, the mobility plan, 54217, has the sentence to encourage alternative fuel vehicles. The city should encourage use of alternatively fueled vehicles such as hybrids, natural gas, and electric. Such vehicles are appropriate for many, for many municipal vehicles, waste collection vehicles, public transit vehicles, and personal vehicles. Encouragement can come in the form of considering alternative vehicle, alternative fuel during city vehicle purchases and by providing charging infrastructure to support electric vehicles. The city should include charging stations in municipal parking lot upgrades, consider how they might be incorporated into street escapes as their demand increases, and encourage via the zoning ordinance their inclusion in parking garages and service parking lots. The city itself acknowledges the importance of providing an electrical vehicle charging parking space. So for those reasons, it's my opinion that there's adequate positive reasons supporting the granting of the design exceptions, that they can be granted without detriment to the health, safety, and general welfare of the public, and that they support the intended purpose of your master plan and development ordinance.
Ms. Coffin, would you say that the Grand Avenue application, the location of the parking stall is more in conformance with the intent and purpose of the ordinance that pertains to location and parking on the lot versus the Fourth Avenue, and why?
Well, it's, it's further back from the street. And it seems the intent of the ordinance is to have the parking be as far out of the front yard setback as possible. And in this case, for the Grand Avenue, the parking space is back from the street. It's also, while it's still within the required front yard, it's tucked in behind most of the house and the porch. So while it technically requires a design exception, it does more meet the intent in that it is behind the majority of all the building.
That assumes that you're talking just one car, though. Correct. And there is enough space to park another car behind it. There's enough room to park two cars there, correct?
Yes, I believe so. There's, there's depth in the driveway.
So while you have one car that's hidden, the other car will be in view.
Well, you're assuming that there's going to be a car parked there. On Fourth Avenue, the car is in the front yard all the time. The one car.
It's in the side yard. The Fourth Avenue is side yard.
They're both.
I know, it's two front yards, right.
Hang on a second. I don't know if we have to call Mike back up, but I want to get better clarification of that. The space between, you know, the setback line and the property line is only 25 feet. That's not room for two cars. I mean, they would, if you park two cars in line in tandem in the driveway, it would be in the right of way.
Correct.
So I just want to make sure we understand when we say if you park two cars, you could fit two cars, yes, but we're not talking about, like, in a way to comply with parking space requirements. I mean, if you have two Minis, yeah, they'll fit. But if you have two Ford F-150s, they're not going to stay within the confines of the property or the gate and the fence that's designed. So, you know, it's one parking space within the gated area on the proposed driveway. The other, the other area isn't sufficient to accommodate another car without encroaching on the sidewalk.
I think that's correct. Looking at the, the plans, the, from the fence to the right of way line is less than 12 feet.
Yeah. So even, so, you know, I kind of get where we're going, where they could potentially maybe put two cars in the driveway, even though there really isn't one that doesn't sit in front of the house. There really isn't enough room without blocking the sidewalk for a full-size car to be outside the gate, in which case they'd get probably tagged by Mary Ann and get a violation notice.
Mr. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I have personal knowledge that the police would ticket cars that were hanging over into the aprons because we, we did that when I was working in code enforcement.
I understand.
So, yeah, so, so I just wanted to make sure we understand, you really can't fit two cars in the Grand Avenue design. They either, you know, over encroach on the space with the gate or they're in the sidewalk. It's just, there's not enough. Again, using a standard of eight and a half by 18. If you have a smaller car, you're like, we're talking inches. It's basically only, what did he say, 12 feet?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I've looked at this a thousand times. You could fit two cars in the backyard in tandem behind the front setback line. It would be the ugliest thing ever, and they'd be jammed up against that house. But you'd still need that 10-foot setback exception.
Any questions for Ms. Coffin? Board professionals? Anyone in the public for Ms. Coffin? Okay, thank you, Allison.
Mr. Chairman, I want to have Mr. Wazlowski come back to testify.
Sure. Please.
Thank you very much. You're calling. Name your words.
Sorry. Oh, Michael Wazlowski.
It's on the run. You're already.
Yeah, hold, hold, can we just go back for a second? I see 12 feet. When we're talking about this driveway into the parking space, it's more than 12 feet to the sidewalk. It's 11, nine to the jolt back, and then it's another, if I'm reading this properly.
Like 17.
From the, from the, from the gate to the sidewalk.
Gate to the right of way, I believe, is 12 feet.
To the right of way is 12 feet. What's to the sidewalk?
Right, what's to the sidewalk?
Gate to the sidewalk is approximately 24 feet.
Right.
Okay. So you could park another car in there.
But not open the gate.
Easily.
Yep.
But you got to, the gates have to open. I understand, but you could still park a car in there. And even when the gates are open, how, what's that space? Well, the gates are swinging. You can see that the swing of the gate.
Is out? Is it out or in?
It's out.
But you could make it in.
They look like six-foot gates. Those would be scaled out to be.
Yeah, so you still have 18, you still have 18 feet there until you hit the sidewalk. The back bumper hits the sidewalk. You can park a full-size car there and open those gates.
Okay. Well, here's, again, not under property. Understood.
For what it's worth, from the property line to the, to the house, whether it's stairs, whatever those gates are, I'm scaling it off to be about 35 and a half feet, which mathematically is, I mean, 36 feet would be two cars, 35 and a half is pretty close. But if you were to follow that logic, you'd have to move the gate to be in the middle. You'd have to move it back.
So to prevent another car from being there, you move the gate closer to the right of way.
Well, I was just going with the logic of you could park a car outside the gate. I'm balancing right over there. It's also almost wide enough for two cars next to each other inside the gate.
It, it seems that way to me, yeah.
It would be tight, but it's, it's pretty close.
Yeah.
I mean, standard parking space in everyday life is nine by 18, and that thing is.
18.
Eighteen feet wide.
Right.
So, you know, there's not much room for maneuvering and all that kind of stuff at home, but.
Any further statements, Mr. Wazlowski?
Yes, I didn't want to detract from.
You sat down, so.
My question was, I get back to you right here. By time saying that, I was re-reviewing the ordinance that you referenced and realized I may have used terminology that conflicted with your ordinance. I may have said the application qualifies as a minor development, which is, it does not meet your ordinance's definition of that threshold.
It's less than minor?
Correct. And I believe that was an open remark to your letter, that both the degree of new impermeability and the disturbance overall both fall below the thresholds of community and minor, where that as the letter does states, you only be required to demonstrate that you don't affect those adjacent properties.
All right, that's fine. Let's just substantiate that then, that it, that it falls below minor. Again, it's lacking like that.
Right.
Falls below minor, then you just have to meet that criteria. If it's a minor, you have to meet that requirement.
Yeah, no problem. Just being aware of that false information. That was all I had. Thank you.
So just to clarify, it is minor or it isn't minor?
It is not.
It's not minor.
He's saying it's, it's below mine, where it's on the bottom run, which is fine. So they'll substantiate that to me with math. And if that criteria is correct, then we'll follow that criteria from the ordinance.
And this is just a storm word of management in essence, so.
Thank you.
So is, do you have any more testimony, Mr. McEwen?
I don't.
Okay. So I guess it's up to us to deliberate at this point. Oh, oh, public comment, of course. I'll, I'll make a motion to open it up to public comment.
I'll second.
Anyone have any comments either for or against this application? I'll make a motion to close public comment.
Second.
I would like to just make a summary.
Sure. Please.
So, so the applicant in good faith has gone back and they've redesigned, as the board had requested them, and presented a Fourth Avenue application. Obviously, both are on the table, but the applicant clearly prefers the Grand Avenue application for, for a lot of reasons that have already been explained by the, the witnesses. And just to reiterate, the, the application, both applications are in support of a compliance with the 2017 master plan, cities' master plan and master plan reexamination, which Ms. Coffin testified to, the mobility plan, which encourages alternative fuel vehicles and also encouragement for, can come in the form of considering alternative fuels during city vehicle purchases and by providing charging infrastructure to support electric vehicles, which is what we're doing here. And the city council's adopted position is also that the city's of Asbury Park supports the use of electric vehicles to protect our environment, attract new visitors, and provide equitable and sustainable transportation. And then as, as we heard Governor Murphy signed a law back in 2021, that essentially made an application for electric vehicle charging stations or electric vehicle parking areas a permitted accessory use and a permitted accessory structuring, structure in all zoning districts of the municipality. So the app, the law affects applications for new development and modifications of existing buildings like this one. For an existing building, an application for the installation of the electric vehicle supply, equipment, or make-ready parking spaces does not require site plan approval and shall be approved through the issuance of a zoning permit, provided the application meets certain conditions. So in other words, if we had complied with all the bulk standards and didn't require those few design exceptions, this just would have been an application to the zoning officer and there would have been a zoning permit issued and we could have installed it. But because of these existing non-conformities, really, the driveway can't be put anywhere else because of the location of the house on the lot. There's no backyard, there's no access to the backyard. So we're stuck with putting it where it is. And for that reason, we need these few design exceptions. But the applicant has gotten rid of everything else and complied with what the board's experts have asked.
Thank you, Mr. McEwen.
Thank you.
We'll take that into consideration. The car could be, the car could be charged anywhere, right? It doesn't have to be parked in, as we can see here, it can be parked in the driveway on Grand Avenue or parked in the driveway on Fourth Avenue, correct?
Correct.
So what would prevent the car from being parked off-street parking on Fourth Avenue and the charger being placed in the Fourth Avenue application? And the resident just running the wire down to the car that's parked on the off-street? If, if the, if the, they parked the car on Fourth Avenue.
Right on the street, on street.
Right on the street, street parking. And they have their charger attached to the house.
And run this, the line down the front yard?
Run it, run it down. Obviously, they got to cross over. They got to cross over the right of way. You'd be going across the sidewalk with the, with the charging. Even if you put the charging station on the corner of the property, which is where mine is, you're still going to be going across the right of way and sidewalk, and you can't guarantee that that parking spot's going to be available. They can't control the street.
Okay. So, where do we go from here, everyone? We have two designs. We understand what the preferences of the applicant. My greatest concern is, in the end, it, it seems like there's going to be a car parked in front of the house. I, you know, that, that's my greatest concern. I, I know, Mr. and Mrs. Moss, you're going to tell us that, well, you won't put your second car in the driveway, and, and I can appreciate that, but in the end, it's going to end up in the driveway. I, I don't know the feasibility of actually having those both cars in the gated area. I, I think, while, you know, it would be very tight, you could end up hitting each other's cars back and forth, trying to get in and out through the gates. I, I prefer the view of Fourth Avenue with the cars. I know in the end, you, you're looking to get off-street parking, and, and I can appreciate that. We all want to not have to park on the street. I, I just don't know how to make this feasible from, from a standpoint that you won't have two cars in that driveway. I don't know how anybody else feels, but that's the way I'm seeing it.
Mr. Chairman, can I just make a comment to that?
Sure.
So with Fourth Avenue, the car is always going to be in the front yard, as we talked about before.
I understand, but it's more of a side view than it is actually in the front yard, Mr. McEwen. I, I can appreciate that, you know, that you're saying that both are front yards, right? I understand as a corner lot, they're both called front yards.
Right.
But it's less of a view if it's on the Fourth Avenue side than it is on the Grand Avenue side.
But it's also safer as far as the relation, relation to the intersection.
Are you saying it's safer to back out onto Grand Avenue than it is to back out onto Fourth Avenue?
Either street. I go by there all the time. There's just as many cars going through on Fourth Avenue.
I see Grand Avenue is a greater thoroughfare for the city, and more people backing out onto Grand Avenue is more of an issue for safety than backing out onto Fourth Avenue. So I don't agree with you, Mr. McEwen.
I have to agree with you, Chris.
I also want to protect the, as much open space on Grand Avenue as possible is the original design of Bradley's overall design of the properties here in Asbury. And I, I also have a problem with the, the length of the driveway. And we know that even if you guys don't park two cars there, if and when you sell your home, we can't control that of the next donors. And it's just, it's calling for two cars to be parked there, so. Look, neither of these, these situations are ideal, but I have fewer concerns with the Fourth Avenue. And I do believe that we should be supporting people having electric cars. I think that's very important. Unfortunately, this particular property, being a corner one and not having any access to the backyard, is really presenting a bit of a pickle for us. But if I had to choose, I'd choose Fourth Avenue.
So, so if, Mr., so if, if the driveway on Grand Avenue were to comply and it went to the rear yard, you'd still have the same issue. You still have the possibility of a drive, a car parking out in the front of the driveway. It's, it's the same thing. So it really doesn't matter, you know.
But if you have the ability to drive all the way to the back of the property and get two cars essentially beyond your.
Then you probably have three.
You might, yeah, but at least.
We just keep adding to it.
But you would at least have the ability to, to get your cars off the property, which is really what we expect and what we ask for people who have a driveway all the way to the back of there.
But that's why this, this, the argument we're making is that this application is more in compliance with that part of the ordinance to take it out of the front yard view.
But it's not. But because of, because of that little, that little jet out of the building there, you don't have the ability to go by.
Right. But I mean, so, but we're still as far, further back in the, into the rear yard or the side yard.
The first car is. The first car is. Yes, you are correct. But I still think the Fourth Avenue is more tucked away and is not going to be as problematic from the Grand, Grand Avenue side. Look, neither one is ideal. We're just, we're picking the ones that, you know. Neither one's ideal, but I do believe that we, we owe it to the applicant to get them a charging station as close to the house as possible.
Any other comments of the board?
I agree with both Chris and Russell. You know, when it comes to curb cuts, as somebody who sits on the parking committee, I take them very seriously. And the less offensive one here is the Fourth Avenue one.
I agree as well.
I agree with the Fourth Avenue one.
Anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Slick, although he was not at the assembly meeting, is eligible to vote to participate in the table.
What do you think?
Personally, I, I'm in favor of Fourth Avenue, so I'll make a motion to approve the version of the Fourth Avenue driveway as long as the stormwater management issues are addressed with our board engineer and the charging, the electric charging station is attached to the house and unobtrusive to view.
With the less of the, in conjunction with the rest of the utilities.
May I interject with the HVAC? We should, we should talk.
There's room, there's room for one or two.
Is there a second? So it's a motion.
I'll second.
Do you have anything else to add?
Well, they, they, my, my clients just raised the possibility, and I think we already talked about this, but I might as well just put it out there. What if the fence was moved further out so that it made parking a car in the, in the front yard, you know, the fence with the gates?
I don't think that's an attractive solution to that issue.
There's a motion by Mr. Molyneux. And there's a second by. The conditions were, obviously, it's Fourth Avenue location and we made design exceptions. Charging station attached to the house.
Or within the HVAC and other utility area. Correct? The way it's shown?
Of course. Yeah, a, as long as it's not viewed, if the view is not seen from Grand Avenue, that's fine.
Stormwater management compliance?
And then can I add, if trees are disrupted?
Well, trees gonna have to be taken.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just.
Can there be?
Tree replacement.
A tree replacement?
Does that require, that make it require going to the shade treatment?
I think it has to, has to, has to get approved by Mr. Vavinsky.
Anything else besides those three items? Charging station attached to the house. Is there any stormwater management? Do you have any questions? Oh, that's motion. It's in the fourth Avenue location. And then we will have the design exceptions. And we've got a motion. I'm just going to second.
Jose Alcaraz?
Yes. Is Jose eligible?
Is there a?
Yes, yes. The eligible members.
Yes.
Dan Harris?
Yes.
Joe, Russell, Christopher, John, and Wendy Glassman.
So Jose was a yes. Wendy Glassman is absent. Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Russell Lewis?
Yes.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Tim Slick is not eligible. Vice Chair John Scully?
Yes.
And Chairman Appoloni?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McEwen. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Moss. And I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Call in favor?
All right.